Good afternoon. I think it's 5:00, right? We want to get started on time. I would ask you to join me in the invocation and pledge that's going to be led by Mr. Boatwright.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make good decisions for our community. We thank you for all the blessings that you've provided Glen County and its citizens. Jesus, we pray to you because you are the great I am. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome you all to the discussion for the -- that has to do with the comprehensive plan. And I'm guessing that Mr. Postal is going to introduce this, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. Good morning, Maurice -- sorry, good afternoon, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning.
I need to say this. There will be a public hearing session at the end of this meeting, and if there is someone here who would like to speak, then it will -- you will have three minutes.
Again, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. As most of you are aware, the state of Georgia requires counties and municipalities to update their comprehensive plans every five years. Glen County is required to update our plan by October 31st, 2023. As such, we've asked the Coastal Regional Commission to help us update the plan. Many of you are aware of the Coastal Regional Commission. They've helped many counties and municipalities on the coast of Georgia with their comprehensive plans. As such, we have Aaron Carpenter and Ian Kellitt from the Coastal Regional Commission here to give you a presentation.
Good evening. I'll start us off, and he's already introduced me. Again, I'm Aaron Carpenter. I'm the planning director at the CRC. This is Ian Kellitt. He's a regional planner with us, and he's been working on the plan, and he'll be going over some future land use discussions here in a moment. And I also have Megan Jones here with us as well. She's our planning manager. Maurice has already provided a little bit of a background of why we're here, and I'll echo that and add a few more comments that this is a plan update. So Glen County's current plan was written in 2018, and it was adopted, and the state of Georgia says it's good for five years before you have to update it. Not a rewrite, but update it. And that's what we're doing. And one of the primary elements in a comprehensive plan's purpose is guiding future development. That's what the plan is for. And implementation of that is planning commissions, zoning, and your future land use or character areas map, and that's mainly what we're going to talk about tonight. We have another stakeholder meeting on May 24th, and we wanted to meet with the planning commissions before that to give you an opportunity to review your existing land use maps and also your character areas. So character areas or a future land use map is required. In this case, we're going with the character areas map. Glen County has it in their existing plan and favors that over a future land use map. So essentially what that is, is guiding developers. And you all, if someone comes with a development in mind for a certain zone or a certain area, he uses the guide whether or not it's a good fit for the zone. And we'll get more in-depth to what you currently have, and we're going to be asking you to review that some tonight, but also giving you the tools and background you need to where if you want to go home and look at it some more, y'all can call us or email us with comments. I do ask that if you have, you know, very important ones, do let us know before that 24th meeting when all the stakeholders are getting together and we begin having discussions about maybe revising some of the zones. If you have concerns, I'd appreciate them beforehand. Let's see. I believe that's all I wanted to go over. The main thing that we're going to show you tonight is an application that we've made to help the public and decision-makers review the existing land use and also what Glen County currently says they'd like to see for the future. So I'm going to ask Ian to come up, and we'll pull it up here on the screen and begin walking you all through that. Before I do, do y'all have any questions of anything I've said so far? Okay, all right. Well, feel free to interrupt us as we go if you have questions and need us to repeat or slow down. Just let us know.
Thank you, Aaron. As Aaron said, my name is Ian Kellitt. I'm a regional planner and a GIS analyst with the Coastal Regional Commission, working on this plan. Right now, we really want to focus on character areas. Like what Aaron said, that is your primary land use element. It's what DCA requires. You should all have a handout with a character areas map, a legend, and then a what's called a narrative that just includes the description, issues, zoning permissions. And that should give you a really good framework of basically, these are the sub-areas of Glen County that have been identified in the 2018 plan, and these are the descriptions, zoning permissions, issues that are relevant to each. The purpose, the whole purpose of character areas is to break down the community into smaller sub-areas so that you can plan implementation strategies more effectively. You know, something that will work on, for example, South Island character area is going to be very different from what's going to work in southwest Glen, for example. So you're going to want different implementation strategies for that. Let me pull this up. So this is a web app that we've developed. It's on our website. It's also the QR code, and I think there's a link on the page as well if you'd like to go there. Because the character area map, it's really great to view from afar, but if you're wanting to zoom in close, you want to see the parcel lines, the road names, you know, this is what gives you the ability to do so, so that you can say, hey, we actually want this subdivision in this area, not in that one. And that's true for not just you, but members of the public, members of the stakeholder committee ultimately. So this basically just gives you an introduction, like what I've been saying, just what character areas are, what their purpose is. These are the three different definitions that DCA has provided. They're very broad. You can define, you know, any sub-areas of character area, just so long as you want it to, if you can have a justification for it. These are just the requirements. I just want to get down to the map so you can see what we've created. Again, this will be on our website as well, if you'd like to review it there. Here are all of the character areas that we have defined. So there are 18, 16 of which Glen County currently controls land use planning in it. So this, you know, does not include City of Brunswick or Jekyll Island. Those are outside the jurisdictional, you know, the land use planning side of things, so we're not going to be looking at that. So I have the 16 character areas up here over on the left. If you click on one of them, we can click on, let's go with southwest Glen. It will take you, it will zoom in on the area. You can see the outline of it, and over here on the left side, you'll see just the same as you have in your package, the description, what it is. You will see permitted zoning, future development strategies. These are all what was in the 2018 plan, so nothing that I'm showing you tonight is new or has been changed in any way. It's what was approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2018. So you can look at this. You can also go over to the map, and you can zoom further in if you'd like. The road names will reveal, and also the parcel lines will reveal as well. The character areas importantly are not explicitly bound to parcel lines. You don't need to. They're general area references. So, yeah, there you can see that. And then if you want to go to another area, just hit this little X in the bottom left, and it'll take you back to the main screen. Any questions about the app, how to use it, how to, you know, refer to it?
Ian, I would just encourage you to, because in this last meeting that we were in the past week, people are looking to the Glen County website.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And is there a link from the Glen County website to your website where this is housed?
Yes, sure, as chair gave.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I heard you say it's on our website.
Yes, yes.
So I wanted to verify that.
Until Maurice gives us the keys to the Glen County website, I'll be putting stuff on ours, so. Okay, so with that said, that's kind of the brief overview of it. Scrolling down further from this, we have, this is an application, and I'll try and walk through it. It's a little bit complicated, but basically you have 50 or so zoning categories, I'm sure you all are very aware of, in Glen County that are used. It's in your zoning ordinance. For character areas, and what we want to focus on specifically tonight and in the next few weeks as you review this, which zoning permissions are allowed in which character areas? This is the primary function. It's the most important function that it has. It goes into all types of land development, including, you know, rezoning requests, because character areas are what inform the public, where development is expected to happen, what type of development it is. So on the left side, I have listed all the different zones that are allowed in Glen County, and we can click on one of them, highway commercial, and it will tell you every character area in which highway commercial is allowed, is permitted. So you can see highway, you know, commercial is not permitted in South Island, for example. So that's, these are things that we're going to be, you know, revisiting during the stakeholder meeting, but we're also going to be taking public comment on. It's like, if you would like that to change, then we have a comment box that I'll get to in a bit. But that's basically the general gist of things for this. And you can click on limited industrial and see which areas that they're allowed in as well. This is really to give you an idea, you know, visually where development is allowed, what types of development are allowed, so.
Can you show it overlap?
Oh, yes, yeah. So if you select multiple of these overlap, I have it at the bottom. It says, selecting multiple filters will show you only where all of the selected filters are permitted. So if you select, for example, let's go with R12 and medical, let's hope this overlaps. It's only allowed in the mixed-use area. So those two areas, you know, sitting right next to each other, for example, would only be allowed there. And that's to give you a good idea of, you know, where you want to, you know, if you want to make sure that there is separation between, say, you know, industrial or residential areas, you know, you want to make sure that they're allowed in only specific areas, obviously. So any questions about that? All right. And then the last thing that we have on this website, this is just your existing land use map. It's just going to be used as a reference guide. We're not going to be updating it. It's just based off of what the current zoning is. We've broken it down, so we've collapsed the zoning categories, R6, R12, R9, R20 are all collapsed down into single-family or low-density residential, just to give you an idea of, again, current existing land use development. So that is...
Question?
Yes.
Ian, so we're doing away with future land use map?
We are not updating it, no.
We're not updating it, and we're just doing this, and why was that decision made? I'm just curious.
So...
We relied so much on that future land use map for a long time.
Sure. So the best reason for it would be that DCA is very particular about future land use maps. They want it done on the parcel-by-parcel level. They want it to be explicit in their, in its purpose. And specifically, and I have it listed right here, mixed use, you know, for a detailed fine-grained mixed use, mixed land use, et cetera. You can read it. Basically, they want it so that if you label something mixed use, it needs to be mixed use. It needs to be a mixture of densities and types of development allowed. As it is currently, your future land use map, basically just PDs are considered mixed use, and that's really something that DCA has been trying to clamp down on recently. And so it would involve going through and reclassifying the 430 PDs that are currently in Glen County to be, is it going to be commercial? Is it going to be residential? Is it going to be industrial? That's just one of the many reasons that the decision was made. You know, a lot of it is, just comes down to time, and, you know, we would rather spend that time making other parts of the plan, you know, that much better, and character areas.
Sure.
I'm going to chime in here as well. So right now in your existing plan, you have both. There are conflicts between the two, and if I'm not mistaken, your existing plan says that in situations where conflict is there, the character areas map takes precedent. That's not to say that it can't be the other way around, but my advice is to choose one. Ian did mention time. If we try to make corrections to both of them and make them both coherent, I don't think we have enough time to do that. But that said, I mean, I, we're happy to do land use if that's a preference, and maybe Stephanie or someone...
Oh, I wasn't saying it was a preference. I just, I'm just curious about...
Why one instead of both? That's why, because of conflict, but I'll let Stephanie chime in on why character areas.
Yeah, they did a great job explaining that. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. Just another thing to add is, and over the past five years that we've been utilizing the 2018 plan, some of the feedback from our commissioners has been that there's more of an interest in looking at things from the character area scale, not the parcel-by-parcel future land use map. So some of that's also based on feedback from commissioners over the last few years. Thanks.
Thank you, Aaron, and then Stephanie. So with that said, are there any other questions about the application before I get into, I just have three questions, but that's meant to open up a conversation amongst you all, and we're here to answer if need be, but it's really to get your feedback about, you know, just a couple of points that we'd like to raise. Okay. So I already mentioned it, but the first thing that we're primarily looking to get feedback on is going to be zoning permissions. You know, we've provided you a list of where all of the zoning permissions are and where they are allowed and what character areas. If you see things that don't add up to you, if they don't make a whole lot of sense, if it's not in line with development that you have been seeing in, you know, rezoning requests, et cetera, that would be something that we want to, you know, be aware of. If you see like, oh, in southwest Glen, you know, currently only R20 is allowed for residential, but, you know, we're seeing a lot of, you know, requests for other types of development, then that would be something that we would be looking to make changes to, to make it, you know, more conformed to development in the future. So the first point, if you have any discussions about it, if you'd like to review it a little bit more, it's completely fine.
Can you show them an example of like coastal marshlands?
Sure, sure. So coastal marshlands is a character area. It basically covers a lot of the area that is within the jurisdiction of the Department of Natural Resources with the Coastal Marshlands Protection Act. Right now, these are the permitted zoning categories, and it basic industrial, conservation and preservation, forest agricultural, the list goes on. We don't like to editorialize all that much, but, you know, if coastal marshlands and the description is going to define it as, you know, marshlands that provide essential ecological services, including buffering, you probably don't want basic industrial to be permitted in it. That's, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. You know, what we're thinking is currently there are zones that are zoned industrial that lie within the coastal marshlands. So if those are to remain because they are, you know, I believe like St. Andrews Island, which I know is in the city of Brunswick, but just as an example, that's zoned industrial, it falls within that area, then we would want to move the coastal marshlands boundary around it so that it doesn't include, you know, those types of zones. So, but that's just one of the choices. We can, you know, remove it. We can, you know, do all sorts of things to it, but that's just one example. All right. The second thing that we wanted to get your opinion on, variances and reoccurring issues. This kind of ties into what we're talking about with zoning, but if you are seeing issues coming up in your, you know, rezoning requests, your interactions with the public that are conflicting with what the character areas say, then we would like to be aware of that so that when we are going to revise them, we make sure that we address those, that they're not going to be issues for you going forward, so that, you know, in three years, someone can't come here and say, well, you know, this rezoning that we're doing, you know, it conflicts with character areas in some way because of a specific, you know, variance or whatever. Our job is to make it as painless on you as possible then. It's just trying to help you out. All right. Yeah, and then the last question that we would have would be any recommendations you would have, you would like us to bring up to the land use stakeholder meeting. That's going to be on the 24th that Aaron mentioned. Sheri is obviously on the stakeholder committee, so she'll be able to convey them as well. But anything specifically that you would like addressed at the meeting. It's going to be a pretty open conversation amongst the stakeholders, you know, anything that you think should be considered when we're talking to them. Sure, yeah. So at the bottom of this page, this will be for use by you, but also members of the public, members of the stakeholder committee. There is a submitting comments and revisions box, so it just, you know, thanks you for it. It says, you know, use this survey to submit comments or revisions to the existing character areas map. And so you can select if it's related to character areas or just a general comment on land use in general. And then it asks, does your comment on character areas relate to a specific location? If so, click yes, and it will pop up a, it'll be easier to see if I make this full screen. It'll pop up this map that you can then zoom in on, and then say it's related to community gateways. You can drop a point on here, and then, I don't have a keyboard, but you can describe your comment about it. And we just got one yesterday that someone, a member of the public, put a point on Blythe Island, and they said Blythe Island should be its own character area because it's, you know, distinct from the rest of the surrounding areas, obviously. And so it should have its own implementation strategies and permitted zoning. So, and that's something that we're going to be discussing at the stakeholder meeting because it was something that brought up, and it sounds like a pretty reasonable suggestion to raise, so. All right. So that is just about everything that I have. Are there any other questions that you have for me?
Ian, I missed it. What was the web address where we can get to this site?
Yeah, so it's on the paper that you have. It should be by the QR code right underneath it.
Oh, I see, sorry.
Yes, but it's also available off of our website. Can you type in our website just so, in case they lose the paper, they can still get to it?
I can send it in mail tomorrow.
Yeah, sure. But if you don't mind, it's, because it's right on our, the page for Glen. Yeah.
So our web address is www.PostalRC.GA.gov. And then under Plant Services, Planning, and Current Projects, Glen County Comprehensive Plan, find out how you contribute. And then this is the page where we're posting all of the information from all the meetings and whatnot, and the link for land use applications and comments suggestions.
and whatnot, and the link for land use applications and comment suggestions will be right here. Click Website, and it will take you to it as well. And this is linked from the Glen County website as well.
Ian, this is also where there is a question, questions for input, is that correct?
Yes, yes, there's a survey link on, I can probably just go to the previous page. Yes, so if you scroll down, this is the community survey that we're publishing, we also have physical copies out front as well, and we're taking all the inputs in there, and we're relaying them back to the Stakeholder Committee to concern. So, two, two suggestion boxes, this one is just generally for the, the whole plan, if people want to make comments about it, ask them a few questions about, you know, how long they've lived there, and lived here, and, and whatnot. The other one is specifically in reference to land use, you know, we just want to, it makes us easier on our part when we're, you know, saying, giving this to the stakeholders and saying, "This is just all of the comments related to land use," and they can review those separately.
But if I'm correct, right now you don't have as many of those surveys as you would like, is that correct? Do you encourage the public to go on and online and do that survey with planning commissioners?
The more the merrier, you know, we want as many suggestions as possible, the more suggestions, the better the plan is going to be. We have copies of the flyers out as well, if you would like to distribute them among, you know, people you know, organizations that you're a part of, you know, we, we want as much feedback as we possibly can. We're going to have the survey open for, I wouldn't, we decide...
We're going to select it then.
Yeah, at, at least, you know, for several more months.
At least two.
Yeah, we want to get as much feedback as, as possible.
I think we had 47, the last I saw, is that correct?
Just about that.
There's not very many people for our county.
Uh huh, yeah.
It's par for the course from 18, though. Gary, would you say that's about where we were this time?
Pretty slow.
Yeah. Most of, most of the respondents were from St. Thomas.
That's what we're seeing currently, yes. We are working with the Public Information Office to, for Glen County to distribute it amongst the social media, it's available on our website. We're also planning public hearings, we've had one already at First Friday, we're planning four more...
Listening sessions.
Yeah, yeah, listening sessions, sorry, not public hearings, listening sessions where we'll set up booths, and we'll, we'll have surveys out there, we'll have copies to the, the link that they want to take, if they would like to take it online, and then we're, I'm also going to be working with a couple other organizations and outreach techniques in the coming, coming weeks and months, if I can reach out. It's all, it's a bit, it's a bit disconnected, you know, you have to reach out to a lot of different people, so.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions from Mr. Calloway?
If you don't mind, I don't care, lady, I have a few questions.
Sure.
I'm always behind times, I read very few newspapers, I have no social footprint whatsoever by design, I do this by design. Okay, my life's very simple and very easy. Could you explain to me the point of this? What's the reason to this? Why are we doing this?
For a comprehensive plan, or for the land use element specifically?
Well, both.
Okay. So, for the comprehensive plan in general, the number one, you know, word that DCA likes to use is, it's a roadmap. It's something that Planning Office, but also all of the offices at the county government can look to if they are having, if there's a question or an issue that gets, you know, arise in the future, they're able to refer to this document and say, "Well, what does the comprehensive plan say about it? You know, what does the comprehensive plan say about this type of development in this area?" Well, the character area says, you know, "We don't want basic industrial in this specific zone, so, you know, we're going to, you know, deny this, or we're going to request that it be changed or altered in some way." So it's basically, it's a document that is not referred to every day, but it's something that, you know, every other week or something, a department is going to look at and say, you know, "This is, you know, it's a guideline for us to refer back to if we need it." It's basically just something that's there so that they can, you know, if they have any questions about, you know, "What's the guidance? What does the community say?" A lot of times, if municipalities and county governments, you know, they get feedback from the public at Commissioner meetings, but the comprehensive plan process is the one point where, you know, we have our obligations from DCA that you need to engage with the public, you know, you need to do something like a survey, you need to do public hearings, you need to do listening sessions and stakeholder committees and bring people together. It's a way to make sure that the most amount of people are heard, and we think it's, you know, very important. And then, I always like to say, in addition to that, it is a required process from DCA that you do that. If you do not, then you will lose your qualified local government status, which entitles you to certain types of state and federal funding. So, CDBG grants, for example.
I'm going to step up here again and just echo what he's saying, but also add a few things. So, things you do in your personal life, whether, you know, you have, you and your wife have two kids and you're pregnant with a third, and you drive a, you know, four-passenger vehicle, you start planning for what you're going to do for your larger family. You know, maybe on a Sunday night, you're saying, "I'm going to go get groceries on, on Wednesday." You make, people make plans in their personal lives. Comprehensive planning, in its essence, is supposed to be taking a look at your community. We do look at the data, so if you know that a certain area is growing very quickly, you might, you know, be able to identify you need more water and sewer capacity, you might know that schools are going to be, you know, feeling the burden of increased influx of maybe population growth. The idea of a comprehensive plan is taking a look at where, where your community is, where it's been heading, and trying to predict what you think you might need. The implementation side of that is land use and zoning, so the two are supposed to go hand in hand. Go ahead.
That's no problem.
Okay.
You can't predict how Glen County's going to grow, and you can't predict how it's going to grow in 30 days, three months from now, three years from now, 30 years from now. You want me to tell you what dictates that? A man that's willing to put his money where his mouth's at, the developers. If we go to, it's like, say Exit 29, okay, and we say that's some general residential, okay? If a developer, a local doctor wanted to...
The medical clinic there, we're not going to deny him to do that. You showed us a little example of medical use was right around the hospital. It's not, I mean, if you get real, it's, we're not going to tell the local doctor he can't put a medical clinic out off Exit 29 if he wants one, and it, I mean, and it fits. Another example would be, tomorrow if we wake up and Sam says they're going to build a Sam store off Exit 29, this is going to be a population, going to be a commercial, just boom, and we can't tell that, we're not privy to the information of what's going to happen. So the primary people we should be talking to is people that actually put their money where their mouth's at to make things happen in Glen County, the developers. The people that should really be the stakeholders in this are the people that actually make the development happen in this community.
So, follow-up to that, is there, let's say you have a residential area that doesn't want any development, how should you guide them to? Again, comprehensive plans aren't static, you're correct, there's amendment maids all the time to them because of things you can't predict, but I wouldn't say because some things are unpredictable that that doesn't mean that planning isn't, there's things in my personal life I can't predict either, but I still make plans. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that that makes planning irrelevant.
I'm not saying it, it makes it irrelevant, that's not my point at all, I'm just saying there's no way for us to predict what's going to happen in this community. We, I mean, we really can't tell what's coming or what's going in the next, I mean, George Pacific could close the paper mill down and it would change the face of Glen County tremendously, this would be a ghost town.
Right.
Southeast Regional Medical Center could say, "We're just tired, we're not doing this anymore. There's too many people that just don't pay us in this community." And this community, the whole face of this community would change.
I agree.
And on the opposite side of that, those, that's two doomsday scenarios, but on the opposite side, some big corporation, Google could come in and say, "Hey, there's, we, you know, we want to build a plant here in Glen County for whatever reason," and it, I mean, it would totally change. Nobody ever knew, five years before Mr. Calloway went out and built Canal Crossing, we had no idea there was going to be a huge development, we all thought all the development was going to be downtown. And then all of a sudden, he comes in and says, "Hey, we're going to do this at Chapel Crossing," and it turned out to be a wonderful thing, and that's the type of person I'm talking about, the people that put their money where their mouth's at. We can sit here, people like me, you know, that don't have the money to do that kind of thing, we can sit here and talk about what we think's going to happen, how it's going to happen, but nine times out of 10, it never happens.
Right, and I think, I mean, a good example of that is the communities that are having to reevaluate after the Hyundai announcement, right? So that's a huge development that I'm sure not everyone in the area knew was coming, and, I mean, there's going to be a lot of ramifications from 16,000-plus people being hired in the community. I, I understand that, that, you know, we are, it's a dynamic situation. I guess what I would say is, even not in response, but where I see comprehensive planning giving the community an opportunity is if you look at the county and realize that, I think we talked about food deserts in our last meeting, there are some neighborhoods that don't have easiest access to a supermarket in Glen County, and I know that the county can't say, "Well, let's just build a, you know, a Publix." You can't do that, but you can at least identify maybe a need and signify to developers from a character areas or future land use map that we would like to see a grocery store in a certain area. That's an example of, again, you can't, you can't control what the developer does, but in its essence, a future land use map is supposed to indicate what you would like to see, and in the same way that, maybe not so much here on the coasts and some areas, but if developers are looking to move to a community, one of the first things that they do in a lot of cases is, is examine that community, you know, look at their land use maps, look what's allowed, and again, you're correct, if they come in and it still fits the community, that doesn't mean that you can't amend your comprehensive plan to allow it, but I, I still think it's a, it's a useful tool if done correctly.
And we have to do it.
And you have to do it.
Well, see, what has, I mean, what has really placed a bad taste in my mouth about this whole thing is you, I mean, frequently, we have people say, "It's against the land use map, you can't do that because it's against..." You know, people need to understand this is fluid, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
It is going to change, circumstances change, but when, when you do something like this, people thinks it's set in stone, and I promise you that if one of our local doctors came and asked us as a planning commission, "Hey, I want to build a medical clinic because I, he's real willing to put his money where his mouth's at, I think I can make some money, and I think there's a need for a medical clinic." Let's just say at Hyde Park Commons off Exit 29, and we said, "Okay, that's great." I will guarantee you, people's going to say, "Oh, it's against what y'all agreed to, y'all voted for, you know, the future land use map, and it's not, it's just not correct."
Yeah, Commissioner Butt, right to, to your point, I mean, the good thing about using character area maps is it allows for a wide variety of development, and you had brought up the mention of medical clinic at Exit 29, as you know, there is a new medical clinic at Exit 29, and that's allowed under the current charac, character area designation, and that's also allowed under the Commercial Zoning District where that site is located. So the character map do allow for a wide variety of development, and they're less restrictive than the future land use map.
We're at the end of their 30 minutes and want to open it up to the public, I mean, you guys can continue to ask questions, but if there are any members of the public who have questions to ask, I would welcome you to stand up and ask your questions. There's not many of you.
I'm Miranda Smith, I didn't plan to speak, I just, I did see an email, but the reason I asked about where did they advertise this recently, because the last I was aware of any comprehensive plan advertising and changing was back in 2018, and we adopted the future land use map. So I do think it's important, like Neil's saying, there is, he's not on social media, I only saw it because I'm signed up on the email, and I think most people that aren't involved in development are not there at all and don't receive the emails. My other comment is based on, I would agree that the character map would be a better use, but I also do believe that it is a control and dictation of, example, what Neil is saying, you know, you have the bigger development, developer that comes in and you're trying to guide where they're going to put their development, but yet you're willing to bend the curves and the rules and the, the edges of this character map to allow them to do it, but the local man is not allowed to do it. So it's like you're, you interpret that one man can put a billboard at the end of Charing Cross in a PD district where the zoning states that in a PD district, the billboard would have to be approved on a site plan, and it be specific on that site plan that a billboard is allowed, however, we have two going up right now on Highway 99 at Exit 42 in a PD that has no site plan and no billboard designation, and the same thing happened on 17, so I just feel that the lines are moved and bent for the larger person or from Atlanta, and then the local person that is trying to do something is not allowed for. So maybe the character map is a little bit better, but do the lines get moved easier? I'm not sure, so, just wanted...
Miranda, Ms. Smith, can you tell you why that happens? Because they have better lawyers than me and you can afford.
Well, to interpret, exactly, interpret what the burger says. I don't interpret one way, and I'll interpret another, so.
Is there any...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, member of the public, who would like to speak? You're the only other one in here. Did you have something you wanted to say? Yes?
The next, it's 6:00.
Okay, all right, okay.
That's the only reason I asked, I purposely advertised for more than 47 people to respond. Where is it? Is it on the billboard, like, or the website?
Ian or Erin?
I think it's important.
Are we talking about the survey or this meeting?
It's comprehensive, no, not the meeting, the surveys, and that you're wanting that people would go to the website to answer.
It's been in the paper, so we...
He doesn't read the paper, I don't read the paper.
So it's been in the paper, it's been in social, it's been on the radio, it's been through email, and I'm not saying we're always going to reach everybody, it's on the website. If you have other ideas or modes of communication that you would like us to use, I, I mean...
I'm asking...
Well, that's where...
It's not email, it's just...
That's where it has been advertised, and it will continue to be so until, I think our draft is supposed to be finished in July, so every stakeholder meeting we have, I know it was on the radio last time, and again, it's, I mean, it's on all those places.
So on the email that I received, did it ask me to go to the website and fill out a survey? I missed that.
I'm not sure what email you received, so...
The county-generated email that I subscribed is the only reason I knew about this special meeting tonight, or else, and only one.
Well, we can, I'll look into that, and we'll just make sure we keep pushing that, that survey, because we would like a few more response, several more responses before we're finished.
And, Ms. Smith, what you heard on the radio today wasn't paid for by them, that was...
News.
That Scott Rifonson and Joe Willey talking about it, and they're not paid.
Just feedback, that's all.
Sure, I welcome, I welcome feedback.
Commissioners, do you have any, any questions? Have any, anything you want to discuss?
I have a question that may be more directed at staff. I had the opportunity to serve on the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. I've said this a couple times and actually got called down for by the previous Director of Community Development for saying this. We were told in the meeting that we had where we discussed not only the character area maps, but the future land use map, that this was a dynamic document. maps, but the future land use map, that this was a dynamic document. And you just used the word a few minutes ago that it was not static, okay? That is the way that I went into every rezone that came before this commission. My question, I guess, and I give you that as background, with, and I do like using the character area map versus the future land use map, I think it's a better way to do it. Will the staff be more rigid or more directive to an applicant? If a proposed, or if an application comes for a rezone, will, are there more rules to follow? Are there, there going to be more guidance? Or are you going to bring every applicant forward and then have them potentially voted down because it doesn't match the new character map? And you don't even have to answer, but you can understand, I guess, why I have that question.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a very good question. And right now, the way our zoning code is written, it does, there is a standard, as the Commissions and the Board of Commissioners are looking or reviewing a rezon application, there is a standard about compliance with the comprehensive plan. Now, just as compliance with the comprehensive plan, and there's a variety of aspects of the comprehensive plan that you, you may find compliance in some sections, but then there could be, you know, potential other areas that it conflicts a little bit. So, you know, right now, if our code stays the same, it'd be the same kind of language that what we do now is we let you all know, this is the, this would be the character area. There's some other section in the code that may support or cause issues for this application, and that's really up to you all to decide how you want to read that, interpret that, and make, you know, make your final decision. Potentially, the zoning code, as, you know, we all know, we're going through rewrite, that language could potentially change, but that's going to be up to, you know, this body in the Board of Commissioners to determine how that reads. And so it'll be, you know, another opportunity to kind of look at that and make sure it's, reflects how you all want to be treating rezon applications, and also, you know, conditional especially use permits as well.
So that answers part of the question. The other part is a developer comes to you with an application, but his idea for the application doesn't necessarily fit what's in the character area. Are you going to guide them in a different direction?
So what, yeah, I mean, the way that we, you know, whether we work with applicants when they do come in is we don't say, no, there's no way this is ever going to happen. So we do say, you know, this is what the comprehensive plan does say. You know, these are some other projects maybe in the area that are similar to what you're proposing. So that might be a clue that, hey, there's some support for continuing, continuing to look at multifamily residential in this area, or, you know, the last three multifamily applications have been denied in this area. And that's informational for you to know that, you know, there might be a little bigger hurdle for you to go through. But that's the way we approach it with every developer, is we don't say, no, this is never going to fly. You know, we'll outline if there are some challenges, just based on how the counties voted and determine other applications, or if there's good support for it, whether it's a plan or whether it's, you know, recent decisions for that area. Don't know if that helps.
It does. I'm very happy with that answer. Thank you.
Stephanie, and because we have all heard this, so there's never a time when you say, no, we're not going to bring that forward?
Not since I've been with the county, at least our, I mean, our current staff and the way that we look at it.
Reese, have you heard that here?
Okay.
More than one time that at Community Development, it got stopped, and they said, no, we can't do that, or no, you can't do that.
No, I mean, our policy, I mean, as long as, and I've worked here about five and a half years, Maurice has been here about four and a half, almost, oh, he's been here five as well. So in the time that we've been here, our policy has always been, it is your right as a developer to get on an agenda as long as your application is complete. So that would be the only thing, is if you have not turned in all the required documents or paid the fee, or your application's not complete, that would hold you in our process until your application is complete, or that it is compliant with the other, you know, Development Review Team reviewers. So that's what will hold you in the process. But if you're considered, you know, you've met the Development Review Team reviewers' regulations they're looking at, and your application is complete, you have a right to go on to an agenda, is the way that we've always operated since I've been here. So-
Well, I'm not saying that was true. I'm just saying we've heard it some-
Yeah, that's a good question.
-for people who've been in here, so.
Yep.
As a follow-up to that, and this is an example of what we did a couple of months ago, and I noticed that on one of the examples, and I'm not sure which character area you had up there, but I noticed the mobile home park was one of the options.
Yes.
And I guess what I'm getting at is an application, if an application comes through for a certain area for a mobile home park, for example, they could maybe be steered by staff saying, well, the character, the character area map doesn't support that in this area, and we could kind of maybe steer them away from that as we saw a couple of months ago and denied. So, I mean, that could be a tool, I think, for staff and could help us.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can show that real quick. So that's a great example. If you would like to, I think our portal might be down. Oh, no. Yes, that's, it's our layers, I think.
And I'm not sure which character areas, you know, that's, you know, allowed in there, but just an example I saw.
For sure. Yeah, you can go in there and click it, and it's on the sheet that I've provided as well. It'd be listed MH. But yes, and if you see, if you've been receiving, you know, recently, a lot of requests for a certain character area that is not, it's not currently permitted, and it's not currently listed as being permitted in, then that is something that we would encourage you to submit as a comment to us to say, and it's something that you've said, well, this actually makes sense that it's in this area, it actually does, then that's a change that we can make going forward, and we'll broach it with the stakeholder committee.
Any other questions? You guys have anything else you want to tell us before we adjourn?
Nothing, just thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to hearing your feedback.
I'm not running you out. If you've got more to say, you should-
No, I appreciate it.
One more question. When does all this happen? When does this get finalized, or what's the timeline of everything?
Sure. So we, as Aaron said, we are planning on having a draft of the comprehensive plan. The whole document, initial draft in July. We're going to be posting drafts of different sections. There's a bunch of different sections that are required by DCA. We'll be drafting them over the next, you know, couple of months, but we plan on having a full, complete, you know, initial document in July. At that point, that what we do, what's called a local 40-day review, where the public, members of planning commissions, stakeholders, really anyone has the opportunity to look at what we've done, make comments, suggestions. We also transmit it to DCA. We get their approval on it as well. They have to do a review and say, you know, what things need to be changed, or they have advisory comments. And so that 40-day review will take us, you know, sometime into, you know, late August, early September, and then that'll give us about a month to do a final revised copy that we then are planning on having before the Board of Commissioners to adopt early October. So that's our timeline. Yeah. All right. Okay.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. All right.
You guys want to hang around for our Planning Commission meeting? You don't have to make excuses. Okay.
Oh, and I should mention, we're going to be doing a, we're going to be doing a stream and a recording of teams to go over the app as well. I basically just do what we've done currently, but that'll be on the 18th. We haven't set a time or anything, but we'll send out that email to the public list that I have, and also to you all, if you would like to attend. It's, again, just going over what I've done right now, so you get a feel for the app, and if you have any questions, you can put them there, so I know-
And if you call him, he'll answer the phone.
That is true. All right.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All right. We are adjourned.[1158.58]
I want to welcome you to the Mainland Planning Commission Regular Session. The first item on our agenda, the invocation, we have already done the invocation and the pledge in our previous meeting, so we will move into our general business. And I guess really before I do that, I need to read this information that I have to read every time.
I have a question. Nisi's not here yet. Is that going to be an issue?
Myself, as well as staff, are each going to take notes.
Okay.
And that should be in compliance with the bylaws.
Sounds good.
Thank you. The first thing I need to do is go over meeting procedures. Excuse me. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side, with a minimum of three minutes, excuse me, allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position. If your group is, excuse me, in the time allotted, the applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony. If it becomes repetitive, the chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay. And so the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 4, 2023. Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
As presented.
All in favor? They are approved. Do we have any announcements from staff? Okay. All right. The first item on our agenda is ZM 5428, Settlers Cove Plan Development District. Mr. Postal is here for the county.
Good evening. Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. This is a rezoning request to create a new plan development called Settlers Cove. The current Settlers Cove multi-family development on parcel 03-03659 is in the medium residential zoning district where a wide variety of residential uses are permitted, including single-family, multifamily, townhomes, et cetera. Settlers Cove Phase II is planned for the adjacent parcel to the west. This parcel is currently in one-family residential zoning, where single-family homes are the only permitted residential use. The rezoning request seeks to place both parcels into a new PD, where the permitted uses will only include single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and multifamily. And this is the zoning map showing the boundary of the PD. This is the existing Settlers Cove, and this is the adjacent single-family zoning parcel that would be included. And this is the master plan, again, showing the existing phase of Settlers Cove and the new phase, which would have 13 additional units. And these are your possible motions for the rezoning action.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Postal?
I have a question, and it has to do with the packet. Did the text refers to a legal description as Exhibit B? Did you all receive that in your package?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I neglected to put in the package.
Okay. No, that's fine. As long as they got it, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
And Mr. Roberts is here today to speak on the project.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to come up and tell us about your project?
Planning Commission, I'm Jonathan Roberts. Thank you for your time today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. This is going to be the second phase. It will be the exact same product as the first phase of Settlers Cove. It's been a well-received development in the community, and we're excited about this phase that will be very similar, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Roberts? Okay. This is a public hearing, and if there is someone in the chamber who would like to, excuse me, come and speak in opposition to this project, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commissioners. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come and state your name and address the commissioners. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, ladies. Let's see what this number is. I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented ZM 5428.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? It passes. The next item on our agenda is ZM 5431, and that is, I hope I say this correctly, Obrech Real Plan Development District Amendment. And Ms. Leaf from the county will make the presentation.
Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, Good Morning Commissioners. This is ZM 5431, the Obrech Real Plan Development Amendment, and this is an amendment only to their master plan. Their plan development text will remain the same. All the language within that is the same. It's just an amendment to the master plan. This is Long Highway 82, just past the Majestic Oaks, the entrance to Majestic Oaks subdivision. And you may recall, in the last couple of years, this project did have another amendment to kind of clean up their master plan. It had been, there had been two PDs that applied to the properties, so this is an opportunity to clean that up, have one PD that applies to the entire parcel, and have a mix of uses of residential and commercial. And here is the property right here. This is Highway 82. This is the entrance to Majestic Oaks, and this is the parcel where the star is located. It does surround this historic cemetery. It's a scarlet cemetery right here. And this is the current master plan. The area in blue, that's Long Highway 82, was proposed as commercial, and the area in green was proposed as residential. And the residential does refer to the MR zoning in the codes as 16 units per acre and allows multifamily, townhomes, or single-family duplexes as well. And there's just a small little legend off to the right-hand side right here that specifies the green and what the blue and green categorize. The blue along the highway, it was allowed as commercial, but there could have been residential if it was a combination of residential and commercial. So for example, if you were doing a shopping center, you could have apartments on the second floor of the retail below, apartments on the second floor. So that was really the only kind of product that was allowed there, and the current developers are interested in doing a pure residential product along Highway 82. And so the proposed master plan in color looks exactly like the previous one. The only change is in this legend, that it now allows residential along Highway 82 as This is their proposed site plan. They do have a companion site plan. That'll be later on your agenda. They are proposing 100, currently 161 units, and as well as some amenities on the property. And their only access they're showing is coming off of Highway 82, so they would have to get an access permit from GDOT in order to start construction. They're not proposing any access coming off of Majestic Oaks Drive. And these are your possible actions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here, as well as the applicant is here as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Ms. Leaf?
I do have one question. Stephanie, did this come before sometime last year?
It did. This particular parcel did. And so this was the master plan right here that you all approved. So the only difference is, it was only, and it wasn't even all like highway commercials, a limited number of commercial uses that were allowed in this blue area, and now they want to have just residential along Highway 82.
Any other questions? Mr. Hightower, would you like to come forward?
Thank you for your time tonight. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, here to present the Obrech Real Zoning Amendment. As Mr. Dawson and Ms. Stephanie Leaf, she explained that this was before y'all last year, and there was the possibility of doing residential in the back and a combined use, commercial and residential in the front. At this time, now we do have a site plan, which is kind of nice. When you are doing a zoning, you know, we're not just saying this is what it might be. We're actually putting forth a plan, and the plan states it'd be all residential. So that's why we're here tonight, just to make a simple amendment to allow for residential throughout the property. You know, a couple of points is that we did hear a few, a little bit of feedback back to ourselves directly, as well as the county, that they were relieved that it was going to be residential as opposed to commercial, because that might be a little bit less burdensome, and the only people accessing the site would be residents. Additionally, the zoning is, you know, actually, I'll tell you what, we'll talk about density and everything in the site plan, but for now, like we said, nothing's really changed other than we just would like to do residential throughout the whole site, and so that's why we presented this amendment. And just ask that you approve this amendment and available for any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hightower?
Mr. Hightower, I do have at least one question for you. The cemetery.
Yes, sir.
How does this applicant expect to maintain the cemetery and keep it, you know, safe?
Yes, sir. So my recommendation to them was that we leave the cemetery parcel completely alone, buffer off, just like any other standard Glen County buffer, so that, and they still have their access to 82. The owner of the property thought that there might be a way within their D that they could actually cut off that front parcel and then included access from their property, but we said it'd be better just to go ahead and leave that access as is, just to keep it where they have their access on the road. It's just like any other parcel that surrounds an adjacent parcel, we'll still buffer off of it, and if they so choose to update it or upgrade it, then they can access from the road as well.
So the applicant or the developer, other than buffer it, is not going to take any steps to keep the people that's going to live there from desecrating the cemetery?
It'll be just like any other development beside any other cemetery. It'll have a buffer, which will include a fence. So the fence would keep folks from coming into development, as well as a fence from keeping folks coming into the cemetery. So it will be, it'll be completely partitioned off, just like as if it's next to Majestic Oaks with a buffer and a fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Jake, just for clarification, what kind of fence?
According to our Glen County buffer, it's going to be a solid opaque fence. Has to be wood, PVC, not chain link. That's the main specification.
That was what I was concerned about. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and so I would ask if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition of this proposed master plan, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of the proposed master plan? Please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. This public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve ZM 5431 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? It's unanimous. It is approved. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, we're moving into the public comment period, and this would be the Settlers Cove, excuse me, SP 5430, Settlers Cove Phase II Site Plan Approval, and Mr. Postal is here.
Good evening again. This is the companion site plan for the zoning that you recommended approval for earlier. Again, this is the Phase II of Settlers Cove. It will include 13 units, and these are as they will look. The units will look identical to the existing Settlers Cove, so that's why the elevations weren't provided. And Mr. Roberts is here to speak on the project as before.
Please come forward, Mr. Roberts.
Commissioner, I'm Jonathan Roberts again, and happy to answer any questions about the site plan.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you. Okay. This is a public comment period. If there is anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this site plan, excuse me, come and speak against this site plan approval, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. You guys are making it easy tonight. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5430 as presented.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? All in favor?
Unanimous.
We're unanimous. So it has been approved. The next item on our agenda is SP 5401, Obrech Real Site Plan Approval, and Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
Okay. Thank you. So this is the site plan, companion site plan, that goes with the reason for Obrech Real that you all just recommended. So what they're proposing here is a multifamily development, 107 townhome units, and 54 individual houses, plus a clubhouse and amenity building. The site is approximately 20 acres in size, so a total is about 161 multifamily. They are proposing a dog park, as well as a clubhouse and pool. And then, of course, the site plan would only be valid if the rezone is approved by the Board of Commissioners, and that is on the May 18 Board of Commissioners' agenda. They are showing an excess of the required parking spaces on the site, and then they are well below their allowed density, so they're allowed to have 16 units per acre, and they're less than half of that is what they're proposing at this time. So again, here's their access off of Highway 82, and they would need the GDOT permit finalized to have that access. And they are showing, the question that came up about the buffers around the cemetery, they are showing that here. They have two detention ponds showing on the site, and they also are showing buffers along Highway 82, as well as the perimeter of the property. And on this upper part of the slide is where the Majestic Oaks property abuts, and then right here is Majestic Oaks Drive. And these are the proposed elevations, and I think Mr. High, or Mr. Lemmings, who'll be presenting, may have some additional details on the elevations. And these are your possible motions, and staff would recommend if you are to move to approve, to add the condition that it would only be valid if the approval of ZM 53, or 5431, if the approval is by the Board of Commissioners. So Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering is here for this application, and the applicant is also here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Leaf? Before Mr. Lemmings comes up?
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Lemmings?
Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners?
I just have one question. The Loop Road, when it goes up and around back to left by the dog park and comes down, on 82, they're showing it looks like a 12-foot gravel, is that a gravel access coming off towards the cemetery? Is that just an emergency access?
Yes, sir. That's right. Emergency access.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Again, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition to this site plan approval? Please come forward and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this site plan approval? Please come forward and state your name and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend to approve pursuant to approval of ZM 5431 by the Board of Commissioners. My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? This is unanimous, so it has been passed. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is SP 5399, U-Haul Brunswick Site Plan Approval, and Mr. Postal is here.
Good evening, Maurice Postal again. The U-Haul business on Altama Avenue currently consists of five separate lots, five tax parcels, however, new construction in this application.
Maurice?
One second, please.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Turner, I think we just did something incorrect. I think we said SP 5431 and SP 5401.
My notes are quite the same. The video also reflects the same, and finally, SP 5401.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
You want to start over?
Sure. As I was saying, the current U-Haul business in Altama Avenue is spread over five separate lots, tax parcels. However, the new construction in this application is only occurring on two of those parcels. There will be a mini-storage building with the 45,000-square-foot footprint on the most southernmost parcel of the business, and a conditional use permit for mini-storage was approved by the MPC. And also, the smaller, new 17,000-square-foot building will be constructed on the parcel where the current auto body shop is, and that will be accessory storage for the business itself. And this is the zoning map showing the mini-storage will be at the southern parcel here. The accessory storage building will be here, behind where the former body shop is. And this is the actual site plan, showing the locations of the two new buildings. And these are the elevations. I sent you elevations this morning, and those were preliminary. I talked to the applicant today, and they said they will not need a height limit exception. They'll build entirely within the 35-foot maximum height. They'll build entirely within the 35-foot maximum height of this zoning district. So that's the conceptual elevation of what the mini storage building will look like. And this is what the smaller accessory storage building will look like. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Crump from the consultant to U-Haul is here tonight to speak on the project.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Postal?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. As mentioned, we are-
Sir, state your name, please.
Ron Crump from Continuo Group. Thank you. From 755 Commerce Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. And we are proposing to do an expansion of multiple buildings on these properties. We are keeping the properties separate. The rear building, the smaller one in the northwest corner, would be a single-story for the U-Box layout, which is the, their concept that, without using a proprietary name, the storage units get shipped to the client. Then the client fills them at their location, and the units get returned. So that would not be open to the public. It would just be a U-Box storage building. Then the southern building would be a fully climate-controlled, three-story interior mini warehouse storage building. I am here to answer any other questions you might have. I appreciate your time.
Any questions of Mr. Crump? Thank you, Mr. Crump.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on, against this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. The comment period is closed. Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 5399 as presented.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is approved unanimously. Thank you. The last item on our agenda is SP 5423, Zachary Free Storage. And we have Mr. Chris here. Did you sneak in, or did I just miss you?
I was hiding. Good afternoon. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we have a site plan for Zach Free Storage. It's located at parcel ID 0314338. The property is zone highway commercial. And the applicant is proposing four units, or four structures with associated infrastructure. The development will consist of four 300 by 300 storage buildings. There will be no onsite office. And a conditional use permit has been approved for this project as well. Right here is the zoning map. Here is the site plan. The applicant is proposing a type A buffer on the front, adjacent to Highway 341, and a 12-foot type A buffer on the rear, as well as an eight-foot composite wood fence. Here are the elevations of the project. And here is a similar project. And here are your possible motions. The applicant is here and available for questioning as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Chris?
I do. Chris, when the CUP came before the planning commission, I think it was in March. I don't remember, March or April. There was some discussion about whether or not Cornerstone Lane was a private access or a public street. Has that been cleared up? And if it is a private access, does the applicant have access to the street?
Yes, the deed for access primarily for Cornerstone Lane is for the property at Dollar Tree and this parcel, primarily. But it is a, it is a lane and a easement.
I know we had some discussion about the lighting, too. Is that, I don't see that on the site plan. Has that been addressed, as far as how it's being lighted? Or we could ask the applicant, I guess?
I'll defer to the applicant.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would the applicant come forward? You are representing yourself, right?
Good afternoon. I'm Zachary Freeze. I'm the applicant. And I'd love to answer any questions.
As a follow-up to Commissioner Higgins' question, one of the, one of the issues that was addressed was the lighting. The other one was the fence that we, you've agreed to do.
Yes, sir.
Have you had, or did you have the opportunity to speak with any of the neighbors? One of the pictures that were shown at the meeting grabbed me. And it was a picture out of the, through the backyard of a resident whose, your property is going to be basically what they see when they go in the back. And I just want to make sure that respect is given to them and the beautiful backyard that they had with their pool and all of that stuff, that there's not, I know with your business, there's not going to be any noise pollution, for the most part. Could be light, lighting issues. But I just wanted to make sure that you'd had an opportunity to speak with any residents that wanted to do that.
I haven't spoke to any residents directly. I did submit responses. Mr. Chris Carey had passed on about those concerns and agreed to leave some natural buffer and natural growth that they had, I guess, expressed us out to keep. May as well add the composite fence at the height of eight foot to, you know, give them some privacy. That way, they don't have to see. And as far as the lighting, there isn't a, on the site plan, there's not a light, light plan attached to, on it. But we do have plans to make sure the lights are front-facing. Like we, I believe at the CUP or Conditional Use Hearing, we had expressed that. And, you know, there'll be very minimal lighting. And also with those responses, we told the neighbors, of course, the gates, we tried to, you know, it's not going to be promoted as a 24/7 location. It's, you know, there's a neighborhood beside and behind us. We are taking precautions to make sure, you know, no one needs to be moving in past 8, 9 o'clock and, you know, put our best foot forward.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, and this may be more even towards staff. But on here, they show a type A buffer, but they call it 10-foot. If I'm mistaken, I think it's supposed to be 12-foot. And it's adjacent to all residential out there. Or it is, well.
It might have, it might have been a previous revision of the site plan, but I did speak with the applicant. It is a 12-foot that they want to propose.
Okay.
So you could make a motion to, if you want, you could make a motion to have a 12-foot type A on the rear and add that in if you, if you want.
The code, isn't it 12 modified?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mine just said 10-foot on it. That's, I just want a clarification on that.
That's it. Yes, sir. The applicant does propose to have a 12-foot. So that is what they want to have there, not, not 10.
Eight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One other thing I'd like to address with you. I received a phone call today from Chris Amos. I understand he's working with you on Stormwater runoff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, I don't know if anybody caught that in the site plan, but Chris is working on that. He wanted me to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Noel, would you like to make a motion to, subject to the 12-foot?
We're not at the motion.
When, when the time comes, of course.
Mr. Freeze, I would like to say, tell you, thank you. You know, we made recommendations to you, and-
Yes, sir.
You've pretty well done what we asked you to do. And just thank you. Not everybody does that, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Oh, well, thank you, sir. And I appreciate the time to be here and y'all's willingness and-
Yes, sir.
Help of your team. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the, to the public comment period. And you're, you're welcome to stand or take a seat. Okay. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition to, to this site plan? If so, come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this site plan? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. This public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
All right, Commissioner Noel.
I'd like to move to approve SP 5423 with the revision that the type A buffer shown as 10-foot on here is actually 12-foot, or will be 12-foot, adjacent to the residential properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, do you have any questions? All in favor? It is unanimous. And we are done.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. We are adjourned.